...meeting to order, it's good signal on this evening. Like I said, Council Vice Mayor Ailer should be coming in any minute now and Councilman Terrell should be coming in and we have Councilman Jack Folk who's on the phone with us down here on the speakerphone. So, the first item on our agenda, and we do have agendas back here by Chief Bennett if you'd like to grab one and follow along, but first item on our agenda is a public hearing for amending the code of ordinances to reflect the departmental name change, so Rob, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you. We have a public hearing tonight and this is a request by the city of Tipton to change the name of the Environmental Department to the Department of Community Affairs. This will be effective throughout our code of ordinances as well as our land development code. This request was approved by the plan of zoning commission on September the 10th and approved unanimously. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either in favor of or opposition or comment on the proposed name change from the Environmental Administration Department to the Department of Community Affairs?
It's Community Development.
Community Development.
How did it go? Is anybody that would like to speak either in favor or opposition to that name change in our case? There being no comment, I'd ask that public hearing be closed.
Okay, thank you. I will remind you that this is our workshop tonight and we will not be voting on any items this evening, they'll merely be discussion and we will be voting in our regular council work, council meeting on October the 15th, so no voting this evening. Jack, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, all right, just jump in if you have any questions or comments. Our first item under the business is, we'll invite Jeff West to come forward and Jeff, you've got several items on the agenda, so I'll just let you work through those. One is to review the bids for the fire hydrant replacement, one is for the Tiff Avenue Force Main relocation, and one is for the bids on Golf Street and Fullwood Park improvements, so take it away.
Yes ma'am, good evening.
Good evening.
We threw our engineer bid out, a hydrant replacement program. It was to replace all of the old hydrants in town, fifty-six of them. These are the old two-barrel fire hydrants, probably built in the twenties, and we need to replace them all to bring the ISO rating up plus just to have better fire system. We bid all of them out at one time, Little River's contractor was the low bidder at $789,200. We're not budgeted for that much. The problem is, we went ahead and bid them out to get the best price we could, because there's a lot of unknowns when you go to tearing up and fire hydrants. So, we worked with the contractor, got him down to agree to his bid items, and we got it down to $249,830, $350, which is just a hair up under our budgeted amount and we would recommend going that way and at least we can get part of them replaced this year and then schedule it again another time to get the remaining amount.
Okay, all right, and that information is in our packet that was emailed to us and that we have in front of us. Any questions, comments? Jack, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, Frank, you good?
I do want to add, Mayor Council, that Jeff and the staff are working real close with Chief Bennett and his staff about coordinating fire hydrants where the worst are and then planning for that accordingly, because obviously this is tied back to ISO, very, very important project for us as we move forward, so we're doing this with the department.
And you said that will replace about half the fire hydrants now?
Half, roughly.
Roughly.
We may come in a little bit cheaper and can replace some more, it's just what happens when they're in the street, replacing them.
How many is that?
I would, I'm, I think we got half in there at the $250,000 mark, a little over half.
The number?
I don't know the exact number, I'd have to go back and look at the bid tab.
If I remember correctly, we had thirty-eight hydrants to be addressed, so this list will be working off that list of hydrants that were, that needed some help. I'll give you an idea, it's about $5,000 per hydrant to give you an idea in cost plus labor.
All right, all right, so the comments, questions on the fire hydrant replacement, so you want to go ahead and talk about the Tiff Avenue Force Main relocation?
Yes ma'am, we, working with the engineers, we went and looked at, over on Tiff Avenue, the gravity line is flowing at capacity all the time and a lot of that is because of the lift station over on Twenty-Sixth Street. Our engineer come up with a way to bypass all that, rerun the Force Main to get it above this to where we're not introducing it into the area that's already at capacity and when rain events come, it won't cause us as much problem. This one came in really good price, $34,152.50, and that's a lot less than we had anticipated that that would be, so it was a really good price.
Okay, and that's on a, that sewer line?
Yes ma'am, it's on a Force Main sewer line.
Okay, okay, any comments, questions concerning that bid on that relocation?
How long should the project take?
Sir?
How long should the project take, once it starts?
I'm thinking a month. It's not going to take very long, it's not a long run of pipe and they're going to bore most of it, so probably a month.
You anticipate the street being closed or anything like that for any of that?
No ma'am, it's all, most of it's going to be outside in the right of way, so it'll just be bored and no crossing.
That'll be good. Okay, any other questions, Jack, if you have any questions on that relocation?
Uh, no, I mean, good job Jeff.
Thanks sir.
Okay, Archie, want to go on to Golf Street and Fullwood Park improvements?
Yes ma'am, we accepted bids for this project, we only had two bidders. The project is on Golf Street to relocate a water line, build concrete headwalls on each side of that pipe, and also to put the walking track in at Fullwood Park. About twenty minutes after we opened bids, the low bidder called, he had left out $85,000 from his sub for the concrete work and he asked that he could be disqualified. After looking at it, and we could see where his number mistake after we looked at it was, after looking at it, we're gonna, we would like your permission to go back and rebid this project, bid the water line separate than the concrete, that way to give all the concrete vendors around here fair auction, because they didn't want to bid on it because they don't do water lines.
Right, that makes sense.
But I think we'll get a better price on the concrete that way too, and just bid the water line separate than the concrete work.
That makes sense to me, are you good with that Frank, do you have any issues?
Does this also put Dog Park on the walking trail?
It's just, it's the walking track around the park there.
What about the Dog Park we're talking about?
No, this is just, this is the first phase of getting the walk control.
This is just to start that. But the fenced-in area for the Dog Park will be within that walking trail, so you'll be able to see the boundary and everything. Jack, did you have any questions on that rebid, are you good with that?
No, I think I definitely would have been good.
Yeah, I do too, that makes perfectly good sense to me, so any other questions, comments of Jeff before we go on to the next item? We good?
All right, thank you.
Thank you Jeff, appreciate that, good job. The next item on our agenda is a recommendation from the Service Delivery Committee for landfill operational changes and landfill tipping fees. Pete, you want to go over that and share our information on our meeting?
I will, thank you, and there's an overview on the agenda and I was just going to go through the actual presentation that I made to the committee itself. We met on September 7th to discuss landfill again per the local agreements and we did that, we had a great meeting, we shared some operational updates, that the work at the landfill has provided stability, especially at the working face and the roads, so we have dedicated a lot of time and effort. Ricky has now gained control of that and obviously we're making a lot of headway. Just operational statistics, we took sixteen loads of leachate out and hydroseeding has been scheduled and I think we, they've finished that up this past Sunday, so grassing and getting rid of all the water was the big task, we did that, but since July 13th, again some statistics, city slash ESG invested 594 hours or $10,362 in labor costs and 538 hours or $32,000 in equipment costs, so, you know, big investment. The county public works invested 229 hours or $4,500 in labor and then 146 or almost $10,000 on equipment. We spent $26,000 on rock and sand, $7,000 on tarps, $16,000 on truck rentals, and then we had to do a drone topo survey of the top of the landfill. So, the point was operationally, we have spent a lot of money and going into the first quarter, we're probably somewhere in the tune of, you know, ninety, hundred thousand dollars over budget as we know it now, so these things had to happen and obviously we're dealing with that. I put in some current photos of the site, talking about the roadway, the stability, the top of the landfill, and it really, really looks good. Next was the budget, we talked about the budget and the last time tipping fees were increased were 2008, they were increased from $38 a ton to $38.50 a ton, but this was suggested in 2016, but it was not agreed upon. Again, we have the vertical expansion to contend with, so operational costs obviously are going to go up and it's time to deal with that. There's been really no SWAS funding, the latest SWAS five and the latest SWAS now of six for funding for the landfill. And I also let everybody know, our sinking fund or post closure for the landfill, the amount is just over $9 million, so we're in really good shape from that perspective. But overall, again, budget ramifications, where we are from a business standpoint and then how this is going to look going into the second, third, and fourth quarter. So, I gave the group a couple recommendations, the first one, continue working with the engineers on a short-term plan, talking about what we need to do with the vertical expansion, the slopes, the filling sequence, the ditch work and all this obviously is going to take a lot of work. Biggest thing is putting in another road access in case we get that much rain again, but working with the engineers to come up with that. Number two is to close the current inert site and request from BPD that we take the inert site and move it to the landfill footprint. Obviously, this would save not having two operating sites, we would gain one operator at the landfill itself, but still offer that to the public and to other haulers for yard trash, but it would certainly give us easier capabilities to deal with that. Number three, reviewing the equipment age and condition, talking about what it will take to keep us in full compliance. This obviously is going to take a study and making sure that Ricky and his team have what they need to operate that landfill. Four, we'll be raising the MSW or Municipal Solid Waste tipping fee from $38.50 a ton to $42 a ton. This will increase annual revenue, an estimated $165,000. In our meeting, it was also suggested, suggested that we need some extra operating income and that we maybe consider putting the tipping fee at $45 a ton and obviously, you know, we could use the extra revenue, but I've made the recommendation that this particular year we stay at the $42 a ton and see what this year brings.
And I think that also, to add to your point, if I remember correctly, that $42 a ton was a competitive price for surrounding landfills, was that?
It was, it was, for as much as we're taking in, you know, 120, 130 tons a day, that is, that's pretty competitive, it is. And my recommendations also talked about the inert landfill, we talked about concrete debris, and then also an alternative, recommending completing an RFP or an RFQ for a company to operate a transfer station at the landfill as a disposal option, so we wouldn't bury the garbage at the landfill, we would do what's called a transfer station just to see what the comparative costs are, and we talked through that. So, we, you know, we entertained some questions, obviously what this would mean on the everyday field, this, obviously, we need the extra revenue to make sure we cover the costs, but the contract, the current contract states that for every dollar increase per ton tipping fee, the contractor may raise its residential monthly rate by 12 cents, so we have to keep that in mind and the committee talked about that, so that means it would be 12 cents per can or somewhere in the 30 cent dollar range for residents. So, again, this is, you know, we've talked about the pros and cons, but really, it's really time to look at this, the county supposedly has this on their agenda for discussion tomorrow and I would recommend that we try to perform as much as we can in-house, but it's simply time from an operational and from a business side that we take action. And I failed to mention that all the ra, the revenue that's raised by this tipping fee increase would go directly towards maintenance, rock, equipment, things to keep the landfill so we never have an issue, we have to worry with that going forward, so.
Okay, just to remind people that we're jointly in that landfill with Tipton County, so that's the reason for the recommendation from the Service Delivery Committee to the individual county commission and to the city council, and then each body will need to act accordingly.
I'll entertain any questions Ricky, I know Ricky's here, that if you have any specific questions, we could certainly answer those for you.
Didn't we decide last year to suggest a $4 fee increase?
In 2016?
I was thinking about something last year, but we talked about this, I thought we suggested maybe a $4 increase.
I don't know.
It was $38 to $42.50.
$42.50, okay.
I wondered why it's.
It just never got, it was never implemented.
And they're implementing it now, but you dropped it to about $3.50?
$3.50, no, I mean, certainly, I mean, we talked about it, obviously there was an appetite to, you know, if there's a, just an even number, we could certainly do that and, you know, the $4 is just the same, I mean, we could certainly do that. I don't think the committee would be opposed to that.
I don't think so, yeah, the concern was, when it was suggested to go to 45, the concern was, well, we'll just drive vendors who are, to these other sites where it's, you know, at Hampton County and different sites that are nearby, so we didn't want to, you know, didn't want to drive that off, so we had to be respectful of what the neighboring landfill fees were, like this $42.
Yeah, but I was just saying, that's what we voted, just since you asked for a $4 increase last year.
Yeah, and, and unless, you know, like I said, both bodies will have to implement whatever the number is, so, you know, if we vote to increase, the county does not or vice versa, we're kind of a mess, so both bodies have to act in sync because we do them together, so.
And I think it's a, you know, fair statement and I'll certainly let the committee know in the morning that that's been discussed. Again, there was an appetite for $45 a ton too, so.
For $45, huh?
Yeah.
But that's, that's really it in totality, I know, you know, we definitely know where we need to place our emphasis going forward. We know very delicately how to deal with the vertical expansion on carrying the garbage up, we know where our shortfalls are with the equipment, so we need to work on that with the county and obviously run it, run a good business, so I'm staying behind the recommendations.
Okay, Jack, do you have any questions, comments?
Uh, no, I agree with Pete's recommendation, and we, you know, the $42, we just need to take this as a learning that you don't wait 10 years to try to raise, or to raise that fee, so we don't get in this, you know, shape again. This time next year, we should look at it again and call the county, see what we need to do.
I think that, you're exactly right, and I'm going to really get in the habit of, you know, Wayne does the monthly financial snapshot and he and I are going to get into the habit of possibly doing projections on a quarterly basis with all the revenue accounts, I think that's good for you to see that numbers and we watch that very carefully, if we're up or down, and I'll give you for instance, like, we've had a very, very wet summer, so therefore customers obviously weren't watering their lawns or using as much, so we'll see a dip in our revenues and I want you to be comfortable with that as we finish up the year, just the same if we don't have a cold winter, what happens with the gas sales, so, and obviously the business is predicated on that, so we just need to be in touch with that.
And anything that, that we are in partnership with the county, for example, the landfill, just make sure that that information is also shared with Mr. Carter so that he can distribute that to the, to his commission, so, okay?
Okay.
All right, Frank, any other questions on landfill? Jack, you good, any other questions on the landfill?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is discussion of amending ordinances for code enforcement and solid waste to address special pickup issues. Pete, you want to go back?
Okay, yeah, Danny, if you could come up and Pete and I are just going to talk through a couple things, I put in your packet, the letter, the solid waste committee has, has met and we are now in, you know, step two, talking how we could improve upon service to the community. And I'd share with you in the packet, our current ordinance, but specifically, the first page was a sample from a current code that has a special pickup. The solid waste committee, we talked through this, a special pickup is something out of the ordinary, and again, we want to be fair to Richard Golden and Collection, that if there's anything outside the norm, things that are on the curb that shouldn't be, someone moves out and no one takes accountability for, a special pickup is designed for that. Obviously, we've got a plan and the committee and I talked about who's going to pick it up, how we're going to pay for it, et cetera, and the special pickup really complements an ordinance whereby if someone cleans out their shed or moves out of the house or, you know, if something happens, we have the ability to go to them to say, look, you have three, three prices here. Pickup trucks can be 25 bucks, two pickup trucks can be $50, if you fill that curb, it's going to be 100 bucks to pick it up, we've got to pay for the disposal. So, a special pickup program is a tuck-in to your ordinance to say, well, look, we want to, our focus is we want to clean up the community, but we don't have the available resources to just sweep it and do that every week, so we have to be a little more creative that if someone puts something out, it's very, very easy to get rid of it outside of the bulk pickup that's in the contract. Our current ordinance is very solid, if you have it there, I want you to, if you could turn to page.
Should be 72, I think, is it 72? Did you write the Tipton ordinance?
Yes.
Yes, on 72, in our packet, I don't know what your packet.
You could scroll through and find section, and I hate to repeat this, 666. It's probably three quarters, maybe halfway. Section 66-6.
That is on page 79. It should be up and running. I think he's already walked with it, it should be up and running. Okay.
Okay, and so I'm under the impression that we take, all right, special pickups, I know each of you want to clean up the community, okay, how do we do this? Through code enforcement and officers, our ordinance is in very good shape and we take a section like this where it says, the owners or agents, tenants or leases of all residential units and commercial establishments shall be responsible for compliance with this chapter. So, we take that a little deeper to say, how does code enforcement deal with an owner? If someone moves, moves out, how do we address that in our ordinance? So, this will be a section that, as Danny and I, that we go to work and we give you some examples and the solid waste committee made it clear, we've got to be able to deal with this. The ordinance deals with the tenants, so if you put on the curb, you're responsible and if code enforcement visits you, then obviously they're going to comply with the ordinance, but section 66-6, we need to put a little more, we need to put a little more teeth into it. And again, we don't want to use, and I know Danny with the code enforcement, we don't want to use this as a iron fist, that we want to rule with some type of enforcement. The biggest thing that comes away, and I look at this, it's glaring that we need to do a lot of educating. We need to explain to our residents, what does this mean, you know, what can you do, what can't you do, and if you want to do something, here are the rules, so that is very, 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 very clear.
Let me ask you a question relating to this, how do we deal with situations where you have people that are placing garbage, for lack of a better word, across the street or down the street, they're not putting it at their property so you can connect it to, you know, a property owner or a tenant or somebody, how are we going to deal with that?
Well, if you'll scroll down to section 66-16, that's collection and placement of 66-16, I don't have pages online. If you go to paragraph I. It's called accumulations of municipal solid waste and trash.
I'm at 66-16.
Yep, keep going, keep going down, we'll go C, D, and then E, F, and then H.
You said I, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Got it.
Oh, pages out, please.
That is page 66 on our email.
All right, so to answer your question, accumulations of municipal solid waste, public streets and private property, blockages of storm drains, unauthorized accumulations, failure of owner or occupant to remove and correct. This is where we need to talk about if you're, if there's stuff across the street, that code enforcement has the ability to obviously look through it, if there's nothing that we could, it's illegal dumping and we'll treat it as such, we have to document it, but we still are going to have to get it off the curb. So, it's, that's, that's part of our responsibility, that's part of cleaning up the community and realistically, there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of that.
How are we, have we thought through how we're going to be educating the public? I mean, I know we have the government channel, we have social media, we have the Gazette, we have a great, and we have all these, I would assume we use all of those resources to get the word out.
I, I think just some kind of very, very informative flyer and I'm going to start, have Morgan start going through a couple of examples, but I think our number one stop is our utility bill for city Tipton, and have something to put on the, pin on the refrigerator, that it comes in the utility bill, it's dos and don'ts of garbage and recycling collection. And I think we could point out a lot of these things as our first step. I think the second step is having that flyer or some kind of notification that we put it on the garbage can or we're able to deliver it door to door in areas that we're having problems with. And then thirdly, obviously, code enforcement is that arm for educating and I see that if we do those three steps, we're going to be able to clean Tipton.
Good.
So, let me, let me understand, so, staff is recommending, and I guess the committee has recommended, instead of charging the two or three dollars or whatever on the garbage bill, and then us doing it on a weekly basis, now we're going to do it by load or by call or by whatever?
That's right, the committee, we did toss that around and again, that's still open on the floor, because this is, we have a little time to do this, that is still a possibility. If you all want to discuss that, to say, look residents, we've got a lot to pick up outside of our contract, if you want to do it, we could add X amount to the bills and let us be completely responsible for it and we go and sweep, but we have to have the revenue to do that. And we did talk, we did talk about that, yeah, but we felt rather than assessing all citizens, assess those who are responsible.
Well, I mean, I guess what I'm thinking of is sometimes you do want to do a little spring cleaning yourself, you know, and you just go, hey, listen, I'm going to put this, you know, old, you know, bookshelf or something out there and, you know, and get it picked up or whatever and, you know, I was, I don't know if I want to spend $25 to throw out the old bookshelf, you know, when I could, I mean, I don't know, but.
Well, you can always later than that take it to the landfill yourself, can you not? I mean, that's still an option to you. Well, we're dealing with this, people that are, you know, putting stuff out on the curb and, and then it, as we know, it grows and it gets wet and, you know, and all of a sudden people pick through it and so, but you can still take things yourself to the landfill and just pay the fee at the landfill.
Yeah, but I mean, let's be honest, I mean, time is, is money.
Listen, it would be worth it to me if I cleaned out my garage to, you know, to call whoever I'm going to call and say, look, I got probably a pickup truck's worth of stuff, I'll be glad to pay $25.
As far as it being efficient, efficient on my end, I would just rather put it at the curb, you know, some people may call that lazy, but I call that efficient.
Now, I will say, the bulk pickup in the contract would cover the bookcase.
Sure.
But I think where we, we fail miserably is the bookcase is kept on the curb for two, three weeks and everybody sees and say, wow, there's junk on the.
And then all of a sudden, there's a couch with it.
Councilman Terrell and I, we, we ride, that's, that's, we know, we could tell you like the back of our hand on how this happens and what's, what we're experiencing. People are willing to think, follow the rules, and Danny and I talked about that a little bit, you know, 90% of people would follow the rules, they just need to know.
They just need what they're working on.
But those that, that really don't, you know, aren't, and we could just get stuck with folks not knowing, putting stuff on the curb and it sits there for two, three, four weeks and we're stuck with, maybe that doesn't look good. So, I'm open, you know, to, to address the bills, if that's what you all would like to do, I think that's also a smart approach, want to try this, but I think the answers are the ordinance so we can make sure we, we have what we need in an ordinance, that is our guidebook, that's our rules and that's what we, we have code enforcement to carry out.
I want to support it to everybody on this council, that Tipton be clean and, you know, it's not just an aesthetic issue, it's a safety issue and many other things, so, so I think this is a really, really good start, I really do. Do you want to add anything, Danny, I know you're, you're in the field, you're dealing with this day to day, any comments that you want to add?
Like, just like Pete said, you know, I think a combination of something like that for that small percentage that just doesn't want to do it, and with good education on all those avenues that were discussed, I. I think we can make a really good impact.
Good.
I really do.
Let me ask you this, Danny. Personnel-wise, I mean, I know you guys do a lot of different things, from building inspections to code enforcements to everything else. Now we're going to throw this on top of your department. Is, do you feel like that time is going to be an issue to make sure? Because obviously, at the end of the day, yeah. Do it, I guess what I'm asking is, is this going to need an additional person? Because I can see how this could take literally one guy or one person, one person, period.
Before we answer that, can I tell the committee, we talked about that.
Okay.
And they saw that immediately. And actually, being really honest, it's my belief that we need a code enforcement person that handles sanitation, recycling, and someone to work these.
Maybe, yeah.
So did I answer your question?
I agree.
I think we've got enough to keep that person busy.
I was going to say, I mean, I think that person is literally a full-time job.
If we want the community that I think you want, and clean and piles and doing right, it's enough emphasis that we need to be there to do it.
And this is alleys, any street in the city of Tipton? Perfect. Yeah.
Well, thank you. If you allow, we could take October, Danny and John and I, we're going to talk, we'll probably get some examples. Those sections, I think we need a little more examples. We'll probably provide you with that and then look at some other details probably in November. And I'm ready to put this forward.
Okay, excellent. All right, any other, Jack, did you have any questions, comments on that?
Yeah, I just feel we need to hold the violators accountable and let's not penalize the ninety-plus percent of the residents doing the right.
Okay. Anything else, Wes? You good?
Yep.
Okay, John, any other comments, Frank? Good, okay. All right, good report, thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, Pete, you want to give us your city manager report?
Mayor, before I can, if I could add something to the agenda under new business, please. And Jack, I'll get this to you tomorrow morning. Stacy Watkins, and I put a copy at your station. Stacy Watkins, I've asked him to engineer the Chestnut Avenue Street and Drainage Improvement Project. I did brief the DDA on this project. They are ready to go. Stacy and I have had two conversations about this. He has given a rendering, which I will share at the next DDA meeting, and I'll bring that to you. This is his contract for work. And obviously Stacy's very good at rendering and excited to see what he does with this. This allows him to do the work. He has estimated the project somewhere four hundred and fifty, four seventy-five range. He and I have to talk through that. We did talk about extra paving all the way out to Second, so I think that's a smart thing. But I just want to make sure that this doesn't get too out of control from a cost standpoint. His fees are forty-four thousand to the project. Again, for a project this magnitude, I'm fine with that. So I'd like to have this on the community's agenda for approval in two weeks.
Okay, all right. Any questions, comments? I know this is a project we've been talking about for some time. It's the addition of downtown parking and lighting and, again, talking about aesthetics, that'll be, that'll be a nice addition to what we have going on downtown already. Any comments, questions about this project? Okay?
Okay, thank you. And the only thing I wanted to add, we have a second-year AVAC journalism student here taking notes. Sorry to call on you, but he's a journalism major and here to just watch the meeting. So I wanted to let you know AVAC in action, and we wish you best of luck.
Glad to have you here.
Glad to be here.
Good, good, good. It's good to have partnerships with our schools here. Okay, anything else on your city manager report? All right, is there anything, Jessica, we need to go to a board report? I know we postponed any discussion at the last meeting. Is there, are there any new applicants? Okay, same as before, okay. We can, we can talk about that at the next meeting. Unless anyone has any comments or questions concerning any of our applicants on the board? Any of ours? You do?
I do.
Okay.
On the Heisman Authority?
Uh-huh.
I think we have an applicant up in Pettipour.
Uh-huh.
Denise Pettipour?
Yes, Demetris Pettipour, yes.
Well, I really, I really think she, I like her being there.
Okay.
You know, because she, she had lived in there.
Sure.
She, she lived there and moved on. She knew what it takes to move on, to do better, and to make that, to enhance that.
She's had that experience.
Yeah, she had the hands-on experience. I would like, I would more than like to recommend her for that role.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that. Any other comments on any of the other applicants?
Is there just one vacancy on the House of Representatives?
There's just one, I believe. Is that right, Jessica?
There is.
Just one. Okay, all right.
So you're making that recommendation?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can vote on that.
We can go ahead now?
No, no, at the next meeting.
At the next meeting?
Yeah, just make the recommendation.
All right, that sounds good. Okay, any other comments, questions, board report? All right, we will go through, and if any of the council has any comments they'd like to add to tonight's agenda or what's going on in your particular district. Wes, we'll start at your end, if you want to share any information with us.
Yeah, just real quick, I'd like to share my condolences with the family and friends of Mitch Williams. He used to be a former police officer here in town. Worked for the DA's office, I think. Anyway, he's, his sons and I grew up together, and so he's been a real special part of my life. And seeing him pass away was hard, hard for me. So I just wanted to give my condolences to his family.
Okay, thank you. All right. John?
I'm good, same as, same goes here.
Okay. Frank?
And I have my condolences also. I also want to thank the public who showed up tonight. It's good to have citizens come to our meetings and see how our government works, and so glad to see you all here.
Excellent. All right, let me extend an invitation. Tomorrow morning at eight-thirty here in this room, the Department of Public Health will have a legislative breakfast. Our legislators will be there, so if you are available to come to breakfast, you're certainly invited. And what you looking at this early, isn't it? We should have done a lunch, shouldn't we? But that will be right here. And then just wanted to share with you, through our Georgia Municipal Association, I have the opportunity to serve on various committees and was in Forsyth today on a workforce development board. And GMA is going to be working very closely with all of the member cities to help us to attract quality applicants to the positions we have within the city, to help us with succession planning so that we don't have mass exodus of all these retirees happening at one time that we're planning for the future. And really some exciting things going on through the Georgia Municipal Association that we'll be bringing back to utilize here in Tipton. So as that information comes forth, I will share that with you. And at this point, we will need to go into executive session for legal, personnel, and real estate matters. So unless there's anything to come before council, go into executive session for those reasons.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Danny here this evening, we appreciate your attendance.